Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is being livestreamed by Chelmsford Telemedia and posted to the CPS website for interested community members to access and watch. Although we are not allowing for in-person public participation, interested community members were encouraged to submit their names and addresses to Superintendent Lang if they wanted to participate remotely under the public input portion of our meeting. During our public input session, anyone who has joined us through the GoToMeeting platform and expressed interest in making a comment will be recognized and allowed to speak with the committee. If anyone watching this meeting live has questions or comments to share, they're encouraged to email one of us during the meeting. We'll read their questions during the second public input session at the end of the meeting. So welcome to this meeting of the Chelmsford School Committee. Tonight, we'll be continuing to review the status of the current teaching and learning models occurring at our schools and discuss possible timelines for potential changes along with some other business. As you may have noticed, Superintendent Lang isn't able to be with us here tonight, so Assistant Superintendent Hirsch will be pinch hitting tonight for Superintendent Lang, so we're all ready to go with that. So our first order of business is approval of the minutes for our meeting on October 6th.
I recommend approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of October 6th, 2020.
Second. Okay. Any corrections for the minutes? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Zero. All right, any good news to share?
I do, I have three pieces of good news tonight. So as you know, Chelmsford's an Alice district, so that is our option-based protocols that we use in the event that we have any type of emergencies at the schools. And this is the second year in a row that we have received a certificate of recognition for the fact that our school is completely ready and prepared for any type of option-based situations that may occur within our building. So we were recognized for that, not all school districts are prepared for this, or do they go through the rigorous training that all of our staff goes through, and we're really proud of that. Last week, we had sixty-six new high school students that were inducted into the English Honor Society. They ended up doing an online ceremony, obviously in our current state, we know that we try to be creative when we make sure we recognize our students. Two of our English teachers at the high school, Ian Van Blackhome and Matthew Bartos, are both the advisors for this club, and for the society actually. And English teacher Lisa Perato came in as the keynote speaker, so that was nice, we got a chance to see all the kids, they were pretty excited. So that was wonderful last week. And then, this is actually hot off the presses, Dr. Lang doesn't even know, so you're the first to know. So Chelmsford High School was awarded the Fiscal Year Twenty-One Innovation Pathways Grant, Planning Grant. So this is our application that we're focusing on two pathways. One is for information technology, and the other one is for business and finance. So the first part of the grant is the planning procedure, so this helps us with the PD, the materials that we need, and to work with teachers so that we can move forward with that. One of the great things about the pathways is that they align also with Middlesex Community College, so students can receive college credit as we go through some of these pathways. And it allows students to just, you know, find that niche that maybe perhaps they'd like to focus in on while they're in high school. So that was exciting, it's a competitive grant, and we just received news this afternoon.
Anybody else have any good news they want to share? All right, so we're now to our first public comments section of our meeting. Assistant Superintendent Hirsch spoke with Superintendent Lang, and he said that nobody had registered them.
This afternoon, at that time, that he had received information from to be part of public input.
Okay, all right. So again, if anybody at home has anything that they want to add, you can email us and we'll read those at the end of the meeting. All right, so moving on to new business then, our first couple items are just updates on full reopening, how that's going. So the first item is an update on food services program.
Joanna will do that for us this evening.
Thank you. In our newsletter last Friday, the superintendent did let the community know that our breakfasts and lunches will be free for the entire school year, so that was great news. We weren't sure if that was, the USDA was going to do that, and they did, so that's great news for our community. Right now, we're serving about thirteen-hundred-and-fifty breakfasts and lunches each day, and this is by dropping them off at the classroom before the children go home, or for the remote pickups on Tuesday afternoons and Friday afternoons. And those are the two main updates for food service.
Any questions on food service? Now, we just heard last week from them, so...
Yeah, that was originally supposed to end on December 31st, so it's great news that we can do it for the full year.
All right, next student transportation update, Joanna.
Yep, I keep Joanna on the seat.
The buses. A gentleman at town meeting last night recognized me and said, "How's it going counting the buses?"
Well, I just want to count the buses.
I'm glad that there's interest in this in the community. So, we are up to, remember we expanded the buses K to eight over one mile? And the high school, these twelve shuttle bus runs. So now we are up to nine-hundred-and-twenty-six students in K to eight taking the buses. And we're only in day two of the high school, so that's just sixty students right now, taking the, there's twelve stops around town. Right now, one of them does not have any children signed up to ride that stop, but we'll wait, we're in day two, and see how it goes. We'll probably wait through the end of the grading period, and when people decide to change, perhaps from remote to hybrid and that, to see if we get more interest, and then we'll keep letting families know that this is, the service is available.
How many new riders did we get, do you know, from?
I do, it was close to three hundred.
Oh, really? Okay, great.
Between, for all grades.
Yep. Any questions on transportation? Is it working out, the high school shuttle bus, are they getting to high school on time?
Yes, so far, and then, you know, if the, if business doesn't pick up, you know, we can just make two stops. So, you know, you do that one, and then if there's one a little bit closer, you know, maybe just five or seven minutes later, pick up the second, and then on the way, we don't want to run buses if there's not very many students on it, we want to be efficient and not have all the buses take up all the lane at, you know, arrival and dismissal, so, well, but again, we're at day two, so see how it goes.
Great.
Also, we haven't heard anything busing-wise in the afternoons from students not getting home in time to either re-log on, so it doesn't seem to be inhibiting that feature, and that's at all the levels.
Great.
Which has been very helpful.
I think it's important to give the high school some time, because the year didn't start off that way, so people had to make plans if they were going to do the hybrid, so I think it's important. And it could have been that some of this, as you said, a switch may occur, we don't know that either. Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else on transportation? I think we're going to shift the next one, learning model transitions, down to the next item, which is discussion of timelines, because it all kind of ties in, in terms of transitioning from one model to another, or changing models, or all the other things.
Right, I think we could tie it all in in one piece.
So, the next thing then would be the focus groups that have been going on?
Yes, so we were able to have, we discussed about this at the last meeting, that we were going to have the focus groups for the three different levels, so we ran a webinar, we had Jeff Dougherty and Maria Santos as our school committee representatives. And this was an opportunity for our teachers and staff members to be able to come on, talk about what's working, what isn't working. If they had suggestions, they had the opportunity to give suggestions at that point. We had two ways of gathering data from this, one was obviously our own notes that we were all taking, so Jeff had notes, Maria, myself, and then we also opened up the, it was like a question section, but we put the question section in for teachers to be able to put in more thoughts and things if they didn't want to necessarily speak, or we were running out of time, we were on for a good, you know, what, hour and a half or so for each one of the sessions. Maria, Dr. Lang, Jeff and I were able to sit down and kind of like look at the common themes that were going on. Some of them, not so surprising, some of them were like new to us, and some of the, any suggestions that were offered. I think, you know, one of the biggest things is people would get as much support as possible, which would be great. We're working on that, we are trying to hire for additional paraprofessionals to come into the building, it's just a matter of being able to get not only people, but qualified people. So even if somebody applies, doesn't necessarily think that they're going to fit for us, so we're going to continue with that work that way. There was a few other opportunities, I think, that we came up with that we could make some adjustments to, but it's, you know, we're still in those discussions. I don't know if Maria and Jeff want to chime in with anything that they, you know, saw, or, you know, ideas that they might have, and then we can just bring them back to the faculty once we can get those things up and running.
Yeah. Well, I thought the meeting was good, because we were able to just bring all the notes together. And I think generally out of that meeting, what we ended up concluding was that, exactly that we need to make, try to make a bit more time available to people, so that they can have continuity of the excellence that they're trying to achieve in every class. And I think yesterday at town meeting, I saw a couple of folks who are also teachers, and what they said to me is, you know, "It's a year that's very unusual, what are we going to do, we've got to keep on trying." And I think a lot of the staff, what came out of this whole discussion was that they're pressuring themselves tremendously to do their very best. So one of the things we did discuss that I think is important is finding ways to communicate to staff the perspective from the student and the parent, and what the input is, but also the feedback that they're going to get, because they're putting so much pressure on themselves to perform, that hopefully they realize that there are many things that are going right, although there may be some that just are overwhelming in one particular day. Especially when all the technology just kind of falls apart. But, so our discussion was, let's find ways that are common, that we can go back to folks and offer them some ways to ease the pressure that they're finding right now.
And even like the tangible things, we talked about the tangible things, that, you know, if we could get, you know, any of the additional microphones, that's purchases, right? So we're looking into what we'd be able to get people to help with those smaller technical pieces. I think we're checking more of like the larger, you know, how people are feeling as well.
I think one of the big takeaways I had was how much extra preparation that has to go into it. For many people, for some of us, it was a long time ago, but it's almost like your first couple of years of teaching again, because you have to find new ways to do things. And I know people are scanning things, but I can remember going from mimeographs to they had that first computer, it was like a two-fifty-six megabyte, typing everything, floppy disk and everything else. And I think that that makes it difficult. I mean, the attendance for some people take a lot of time. I have never been able to correct online. I tried it when I was at National Community College, and there were so many arrows and things that I just printed and then scanned, and I think that's another skill. And that's time-consuming, especially if you're not used to it. But one of the things I heard was people helping one another, like groups working together, sharing the workload, the middle schools, people in the same department getting together, and I can only think, some of you may know, one of the nicest people ever to work in Chelmsford School System, Eddie Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter, who taught English, I had just come to the high school, I was in the back typing a quiz, and Ed came up to me and said, he never raised his voice, said, "What are you doing?" I said, "Well, I'm making up a quiz for the crucible." He said, "You don't do that, check with everyone else. Use the other teachers, they'll have material you can use." And that's one thing, when I taught, we were very good about doing that. And I think, hopefully, when people get used to the technology and starting over again, that there'll be more of that cooperation, that people will, you know, will share ideas to make things easier. It's like, you know, the way to say it is, "This worked for me, I don't know if it'll work for you," but I think we started to hear some of that.
Yeah, they started to collaborate.
The one comment, everyone who, and I think I said it last week, they're thrilled to have, be back with the kids, be back with the students, and be back with their colleagues. So, you know, it's, we've all said the difficult part of this is no end date. And I think people are adapting, and it is a lot of work, and I think, as Maria said, and as Linda said, we've got to find how we can support them, because it's a lot of hours. And those of us, if we think back to our first couple of years of teaching, and that's for some people, that's exactly what it is, because you're changing your whole mode of doing things, and there's new curriculum, and that's really time-consuming.
Yeah, it's front-loading, it's a lot of front-load work that will be great when they go back to revisit it next year, but they're not there, they're living in the present, in the moment. I mean, even, we received, you know, our shipment of some of our documents that we need to start putting up online, and literally it took us an hour and a half just to look at the stuff to say, "How are we going to do this?" That's a lot of time to think about how we're going to do it, now we have to execute the plan, which is going to be even more time.
There were different things at different levels as well. I think that at the elementary level, I heard quite a bit of, it's much more difficult to teach to K through two than it probably is through three and four, because they're much more self-sufficient in terms of dealing with the technology at home and so on. And I think also the other thing that I heard at the middle school level was the wonderful thing about collaboration, which Jeff just mentioned, and even collaboration between the two middle schools, which was wonderful to see. And there were other things, because I think throughout both the elementary and the middle school, one common theme was the specialists and their roles, because they're spending quite a bit of time in the regular classroom assisting teachers and not getting to that. And then, at the high school level, I actually think we didn't get as many people who participated in the session, but the high school level has other things that are, became a problem. For example, you might have expected ten people in your classroom, or eight students, and now you only have two or three, because people want to participate in sports, and so they want to be remote. Those type of things also present a pretty big challenge to maybe, I'll use an example, a history class, where you're going to have discussions and so on, and you are prepared to do it to the students in the classroom, and suddenly you've got distance learning. So, it's those type of things that, the other thing I thought was pretty incredible was the amount of time that some of the teachers in the high school level took over the summer to prepare for classes like the special art classes. They prepared kits for students to pick up, and parents to pick up, and so on, and some still haven't, and haven't been able to get it. So, it just more, takes more time, more follow-up, more, you know, collaboration. And one of the difficult things is that, it's where we might have PTO meetings, where we had discussions, and then it went back, and I think that feedback is not there as much. So we also talked about, how do we generate more ways so that staff gets more feedback and knows what's happening out there? And I'll conclude with this on the feedback, yesterday, again at the town meeting, several parents told me that the teachers are phenomenal, and it's in elementary and middle school. They realize the need for the specialist, but they said, they also said, "It's in a year where we're going to have to focus on the elementary, the basic requirements of education are going to have to be met somehow." So some people realize that that is, and other people think that we should make more time available. So there's always this balancing act of trying to make this all work. So one of the things I did want to ask Dr. Hirsch is, have we, in terms of staffing, we're looking for more paraprofessionals?
We're hiring as fast as we can, even with like substitutes too, so as soon as people come in, they're processed, we get them up and running, because they need some training on top of it too, so it's not your natural, just go into the classroom and you'll figure it out. They need to work with technology, so we always try to set up some time for them prior to going in, to get some technology training, so it's not always trial by fire, right, which it does happen, let's face it, some people get in there and they have to work it out. But everybody's been wonderful about like, "Let me help you with this, let me get this set up." The plans that the teachers are leaving for everybody are pretty clear, you know, and everybody, there's not a lot of, you know, what should they have been doing? Teachers have been pretty, you know, specific as to what they would want to get done, and making sure that those kids are getting access as best as possible.
Because that also does put pressure on if you need to take some time off.
Yep.
And, you know, you would just be able to do it, but now you feel this sense of responsibility that maybe you can't take that personal time, because there's no substitute or so on. So I think it's going to be very important to make sure that, you know, we try to be as fully-staffed as possible.
Absolutely.
Are other school districts having issues with this as well?
Yeah, this is not just Chelmsford-specific, everybody is vying for the same candidates, the same pieces, we're trying to think outside the box, work with the colleges, see who has people that are available, and, you know, try and make those accommodations and arrangements to get people in the buildings. But the right people too, not just people in general, and just trying to make sure that we can keep the integrity of what we're doing intact. And people have been doing an amazing job, I mean, an amazing job in a terrible situation.
And I think, because you have the students at home, and you have the students in front of you, I think when there's a technological glitch, it's magnified. You know, whereas before, you know, if you went in to teach and it didn't work, you could grab from your bag of tricks, that's a horrible thing to say, but from your past experience, and you could teach a class, but now you're responsible for the students in front of you, and then the students at home, and if you should be teaching a class and you get kicked out of the class, I think some people were saying that was happening, that just puts more stress on the situation, because I, as I said before, when I tried to do it last semester at the college, and I couldn't do it right, that you put pressure on yourself, you look as if you don't know what you're doing, when it's a technological glitch. And I think as we know more and more what the specific, you know, if people tell their building principals, or, you know, their coordinators, dean's assistant, you know, where those glitches are coming, if there tends to be some kind of trend or one thing, maybe, you know, technology can get on that, because it's a new world, I don't know if it's a brave new world, but it's a new world.
Teachers have been great about, like, you know, it's teaching the students the expectations that you would teach them in the classroom, is like, what does that look like online? So, boys and girls, if I get kicked off, this is what I expect you to do, having choice boards, go to this activity, so teachers are prepping them beyond the, what does it look like in the classroom, and how we run a classroom? How do we run an online piece when something goes wrong, or you get bounced out, or, you know, something just happens? So the kids, they're teaching them those expectations, but that's, again, another new thing, and they're working on it, and they're doing a terrific job. Even if they think they're not doing a great job, they are doing a terrific job. You see it, it looks like it's flawless.
I think the thing that I came away with, with the teachers' concerns, and I think I said this last meeting, the teachers' concerns were the things that were getting in their way of doing what's best for the students.
Right.
And, you know, the extra time for, you know, all this kind of stuff, and the prepping, and, you know, concerned about the technology. The teachers, you know, everyone, staff, their focus is on what's best for the students, and, which is great, as Maria said, we have faculty and staff and every, you know, ministry people we should be proud of, and...
Absolutely.
They're doing a great job.
Can I have something?
A couple of things. The first thing is, you know, I agree with you, it is like being a first-year teacher, but usually you only have a couple of people like that in your district, it's not your entire district. And my concern is, and this is not just true for Chelmsford, this is actually based on, you know, things that, you know, I've been hearing or reading about across the country is the sustainability, you know, of this level of effort on the part of the teachers, because it's not just one lesson, it's actually three lessons. It's your hybrid in front of you, your hybrid at home, and then your remote that are sprinkled in. And you're right, you know, they have to make adjustments as the technology, you know, hits glitch or something like that, and that's another level of planning that you have to do. So, I think that one of the things that I would like to take a look at, and maybe get, you know, dive in a little deeper and get a little bit more specific about is, what kind of technology do they need, and where are the resources available to them if they have questions? So, for example, we have a Google Classroom for teachers on technology, so if I needed to look up how to run a Zoom meeting, for example, it would be in that Google Classroom. So something, because one of the things that's very, very frustrating is trying to find new ways of being efficient. There's a lot of inefficiency, because you're either learning it for the first time, or, you know, I know for me, for example, I don't go about it in the most straightforward manner, because I don't have a lot of experience with it necessarily. So what can we do to eliminate some of that, either inefficiency for teachers, you know, those roadblocks that will just wear you down eventually? Because this sustainability is a huge issue, okay? I mean, I'm exhausted now, I know you're exhausted, we're all exhausted, you know, and it's October. So, you know, what is this going to be like by January? The other thing too, not necessarily related to the focus groups, but I also want to make sure that we're, both for staff and students, keeping, you know, health and safety at the forefront, you know, making sure that they've got the masks, making sure they've got the cleaners, you know, whatever it is that they need. Again, you know, if you're in the classroom and you run out of spray, it's like, you know, I've got a technology glitch, I need spray, and, you know, so-and-so needs to use the bathroom, all at the same time. And these are the kinds of things that, like I said, just really wear you down, you know, when it happens day after day. So, you know, whatever we can do to make sure that those things are taken care of, and then, you know, just really, whatever we can do for the social, emotional needs of both the staff and the students, I know we focus a lot on the students, and I think that that's key. It's been really rough to see how hard it's been on some of the students, having been at home for a prolonged period of time, or trying to juggle all of this, or losing out on opportunities that they may have had that they won't have this year. You know, it's been hard, it's been really hard, it's been hard on parents, and it's been really hard on our staff. So, you know, whatever ways we can support people, and, you know, coming up with some really specific ideas, because I think we do talk in generality sometimes, but I think that we really need to kind of, you know, break it down and come up with some things that we can operationalize, that we'll be able to help people out.
To that end, are we still offering PD of various sorts, you know, new stuff? Tomorrow, I could take PD on Pear Deck, but I don't like pears, I don't even know what it is. I just know that it's something they're offering tomorrow.
We're not getting pears sitting on a deck, I can tell you that right now.
But, are we still offering things like that, like people looking for new tools for the...
They are, and what we've tried to tell people too is, like, you know, if this is not your wheelhouse, like, focus on, do a couple of them well, don't try and do all of them, but I think it gets, you know, you get excited, you feel like, "Oh my gosh, Donna's doing this, and Maria's doing this, and John's doing this," it's that anxiety, try and just do one or two of those things well. What's really great is the TISs in the buildings, and that float around to the buildings, they have videos that are completed, so we have a complete spreadsheet, I know you get the little snapshot on the smore, it's not just for parents, it's for teachers too, that they can go and watch a video on it, right? And if they need something specific just to them, they work with the TIS, that was part of pulling the, changing that model for, at the middle schools and stuff, so they can go in and actually co-teach with them. Contact your coordinator, contact the people that know how to do these things, so there's the larger PD, like, everybody gets this, right? Then there's the kind of school-based ones, like, maybe something different for the schools, like, take for example, your K-one and two teachers are just getting those ClearTouch TVs, they haven't had them before, so they're getting PD on ClearTouch TVs that the other teachers have already received, right? Or if somebody needs a refresher on it, and then you can have individualized, "I need help with this, this is not working out." Technology shows up right there to help you do the lesson, or help you with that piece. So there's the three different layers that go along with that, plus, then there's the bank of tutorials that are available, so if it's better for you to do it at midnight, because that's the time you want to go and learn about Pear Deck, then that's the time that you can go and watch a video on how that works. Like, for example, we just got the, you know, in Google Meets, we now have the breakout rooms, they did a whole tutorial on what that looks like, and how you can mix them up, or you can assign them specifically. Click here, this is how you do it, so you can watch those videos as well. But if you still need some help with it, you give a, you know, throw your hand up, and somebody will show up and help you out with that.
Do we know if the staff's accessing those, I mean, is there anybody?
Yeah, they are. I mean, some, they're doing that, or they're working with their colleagues, but they are accessing all of that. And Cory Lynn, who's one of the newer TISs, she does a wonderful job, she has such a nice calming voice. It's better than me, I'd be like, click here, click here, click here. So, they're doing a really nice job with all of that, and also helping each other out, so that's helpful to have that bank, where people can go to it whenever they feel comfortable.
One of the things that was brought up in terms of the element, both the K level and first grade to an extent, but K level, was they were looking for a different type of technology that had been used before. So, and that was discussed in the groups. I think that the whole technology thing, and going through all of our discussions and making sure that we're offering as much of what they need access to, will be key, very important. And the other thing is time. You know, it takes time to learn, it takes time to plan, it takes time to do... time to learn, it takes time to plan, it takes time to do all of these things. Uh, once you've done it one time, like Jeff says, it gets better. Um, but technology is always there, so it can be the surprise of the day, and then that day is ruined. Uh, but, um, people realize that too. Uh, parents understand that, I think students, most of them, and the little kids might be a little, a little bit different, but at a certain level, they truly do understand. Um, and so we all have to just work within it. It's difficult. What Donna said is very true. I think that ability to sustain the pace and the level of what we're trying to accomplish in the district is really, really important. And people are worried about assessments. And people are worried about how to give the right feedback and so on. So that means that they're truly worried about exactly what you said, Jeff, the student. Um, and I'm personally witnessing it. So I know, and John can talk to you a different level, but I'm personally witnessing what's happening at the high school level. I see everybody trying to do their utmost best. Um, I, I know the students realize it. They use the breakout rooms all the time. They go into discussions, they're getting ways, and the students are getting more used to it, and you see that there's more participation as well. So, um, that's definitely working. The other thing I want to say about the high school level that I'm seeing is the, every effort to bring the activities into a virtual world. So, um, I am seeing that too, to a very large extent, and, and that's terrific.
And that's happening at the middle school, so they're putting the call out for that. Talking about like some of the normalcy, the SEL pieces, like even seeing, and this might sound silly, but they were going to go back on, so they're like, don't forget, we're going to do Friday lunch, bring your money down, make sure you have the right change. Like, that's exciting. It's like, oh, I don't have to make my sandwich today, this is awesome. I'm getting a salad from wherever they get it from. It, those little, like, bring, trying to bring back those normalcy things of, you know, we're doing Friday lunch, we're doing, um, you know, we're dressing with our favorite sport team, we're doing something. They have to go back to some of those pieces that are not necessarily in place right now. Um, that's going to be a big hit, I think, at the high school level. They're so used to all the different events that happen. What is that going to look like? Because that's, that's the exciting pieces. Those are the things that make you want to come to work, you know, you're looking forward to fun things. So how do we think about those things in a different way?
Right. I think it's important to do those fun things, but, you know, I, I can't emphasize enough is how we can't, um, ignore, I think sometimes, just the basics. So, you know, I'll use, you know, hot water as an example in the bathrooms, you know, making sure that there's hot water and soap and paper towels. I mean, those are the kinds of things, I think, that sometimes, um, you know, like I said, they just really wear you down.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? When, you know, you are, you know, you're like, I can't get hot water in the bathroom for Pete's sake. Maybe I'm using me as an example.
I was going to say this a lot.
I was going to say, I'm having a fort-
We have hot water in the bathroom.
No, seriously.
(laughing)
But, but seriously, I mean, you know, seriously, you know, really, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, I don't, the, I think these, these fun things are great, but we have to really pay attention to the, um, the basics, um, so that people are not feeling defeated by, you know, the, the, the things that they shouldn't even have to think about, to be perfectly honest with you. That there should be, um, expectations that we have, you know, of our facilities, of our, um, of our, uh, technology, whatever it might be. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to say this, you know, and I won't heed my own advice, but, uh, you know, I left my building today and my principal happened to be there. She said, so, how's it going? I said, I'm doing the best I can. She goes, that's all we want you to do.
Yep.
You know, that's all we want you, we don't expect to be perfect, you know, you've got to do your best. And so I'm still going to stress out tomorrow about what I'm doing, but, you know, but, but it's true. We, you know, you can only do the best you can do.
Yep.
You know, but we're all perfectionists, you know, I know.
Yeah, and it's hard to not be planned in advance-
Right.
...when you're a seasoned teacher too.
Right.
So it is that first-year piece. You're used to knowing what the lesson's going to be, doing that, and having it. It's hard, you're always planning on the fly at the same time.
I also, um, noticed today especially, a message came from, um, Principal Murray about, um, attendance and showing up for classes and so on. And that's just one example, but I think the consistent messaging and communication from administration out to parents and students is going to also be a great assistance, um, so that the teacher doesn't have to be following up every day, um, and doesn't get, um, messages that just make absolutely no sense about attendance. So the rules need to be very clear, and the messaging has to be very consistent about those rules. I'm seeing some of it. I'm hoping that it's happening at every level and that it needs to be consistent all the time. Um, so that's one way I think administration can really, really help and make the basics, um, available, so that teachers don't have to work so hard to just make that a reality here.
Linda, I was actually going to ask this, if we could just get, um, an attendance report for the, um, the next meeting or the meeting after, whichever makes the most amount of sense.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I am kind of curious, you know, do we have kids showing up, you know, consistently on a daily basis? Are we, do we have kids, you know, missing classes in the first half of the day, second half of the day?
Mm-hmm.
You know, kind of curious to see what that looks like, especially because we have a resolution-
Right.
-for M.A.C.E. that we're going to be talking about with regards to attendance.
John, any thoughts? How is learning going at the elementary level?
Yeah, I mean, so I'm, I have middle and elementary, and, um, I watch, I think I actually sent Linda a picture one day.
Yes.
So my son, I work upstairs and he works, uh, kind of off to the side. No, it's been good. It's obvious the teachers are putting in the effort. Um, you know, we've had hiccups. You know, sometimes the timing, we have to set alarms all the time because the kids will miss class, and we're kind of managing that. But it's really obvious how much effort the teachers are putting into it. Um, you know, my son has folders that go home with them, which is specific work for at-home, but it reflects what's going on in the class. I cut out, um, some things in construction paper today, which I haven't done for probably thirty-seven years or so.
Oh, good.
Um, no, but it's, it's obvious they're putting in the work and the effort. And, um, you know, given the situation, they're getting the best education they can.
Yep.
And, um, I'm very confident and I, and I know the teachers really care. So, and the administrators, everybody does, but.
Now, are these focus groups going to continue to meet, or what's the plan?
Yeah, we're going to have to talk about, like, when do we want to have another one? Well, we have to come up with what our tangible items, like what our deliverables be from this one, and then I think at that point we'd say, when would we like to check in? What's a natural check-in time again?
Right.
For teachers.
And I'd like to thank Jeff and Maria for-
Yes, thank you.
-all the time that you guys put in today.
And that was fun, doing the GoTo webinar. Thank you. You did that first technology.
I thought it was important.
Yep.
I thought it was very important.
I think it's important that we keep listening and that we support, you know, teachers, students, everyone, you know, as, you know, to the fullest extent we can. And, you know, Donna and Dennis both said sustainability, and I know that came up from the teachers that, you, you know, you can tell you're a good teacher, Dick McCaffrey used to say, because you're tired at the end of the day. And, uh, as I said, they're working hard and it's, I just can't imagine what they're putting in.
Tired at the beginning of the day, what does that mean?
Huh?
We're tired at the beginning of the day, what does that mean?
I'd like to see the, the focus group continue because I think that, um, you know, if we need to make a change, we need time to be able to plan. And, you know, at some point we may say, okay, you know, we need to make some adjustments here because this is no longer becoming sustainable. And I don't want to let this get too far ahead of us.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, I don't think we're plan, I think we're planning to-
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, and I also at the building level, because we had a, a meeting, an admin meeting today-
Right.
-for them to gather stuff, because it's going to, some things are building-specific-
Right.
-or level-specific, to keep having those conversations about like what's working, make the changes, get them what they need when they need it. And like I said, it sounds silly, but like a simple item, like we were going around and giving them the containers to hold the tiles for their, for their phonics program. I know that, but as a teacher, you're like, oh, presents! It's a plastic container, but they loved it, you know what I mean? So just knowing that there's even like little supports like that in place, that you're not losing materials, and where is this going to go? Because some, you know, at the elementary level, we have two new programs that are running very well, thanks to the teachers. And it's, you know, you want to keep that, that enthusiasm for a new program going as well.
And we, we've heard some suggestions-
Mm-hmm.
-from teachers that works for them, and then we've looked at, you know, how can we do that throughout the whole system? So I think that's important too, part of the focus, when they tell us what works, that we're able to share.
All right, so that's the present. Um, we'll talk a little bit about the future and some, uh-
Yeah, so we have those-
-highlights for-
Right, we had those two, uh, so there was two items here, and we just, in discussing with Dennis, like what we should combine together. So there's the learning model transitions, and that's people that would like to make a transition from remote to hybrid, hybrid to remote. Obviously, hybrid to remote's a little bit easier, because we're not talking about placement within the, the school. It's the, coming from remote back to hybrid. So when we polled the principals, just in general, how many parents had they heard from, it wasn't many, right? So at this stage of the game, what we would like to do is get some real data on it from this building levels. How many parents are looking for a switch in their learning model at this point, and where can we accommodate them? So we need some hard numbers rather than just a, a gathered list. So I would have to say the highest that I had heard was one of the middle schools, five parents altogether wanted to come back to the school. So we're going to take a look at what that, what that would look like. And then a natural transition would be at the end of the term for the, um, for the middle school and the high school, and in December for the elementary level, because they work on trimesters. So once we gather that information, find out who wants the transition back either way, and where we could place them, we'll be able to make that transition for parents at this time.
For middle and high school, what is the end of term?
So end of term for high school is currently right now, November 6, and I think it's November 18th, it could be 17th for the middle school. They're always a couple of weeks off. And it's December 8th is the end of term, end of the trimester for elementary. So once we get the firm dates, the firm numbers, we'll be able to make those adjustments as needed.
Mm-hmm.
Would we be looking to make any other adjustments in terms of extending the day?
Right.
As that was, or at the same timeframe, we'd look to do something like that?
Yeah, so we had, we actually talked about this today in our admin meeting. Um, you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education said, have these three plans ready to go and be fluid, right? So at the beginning, the in-person one kind of got kicked, right? Because we knew that wasn't happening. We weren't bringing all the kids back. However, they did a lot of the legwork around what that looks like for in-person full day. So what we're going to do is have, um, within our admin team first, and then we can bring it down to the school level, we're going to start vetting out what would that plan look like to at least have Cohort A and B in full day. What's, what's going to change? One of the biggest factors obviously is lunch, right? What is that going to look like? Because that was one of our bigger inhibitors, except for, you know, spacing, was lunch. What would that look like? And then what is that going to look like schedule-wise? Because we would go back to some original scheduling. So we could get those specialists in. However, those specialists are also acting as a second person in classrooms, so, you know, what's the give and take, right? So as an admin group, we're going to put together working teams, we talked about that today, get those working teams together. What is it going to look like at the three levels, and what would need to get done? And then start to plan on what that, what kind of a date would that look like? Again, we're a little bit in limo, limbo, because we still have, obviously, the coding that's happening with the different towns. We haven't, we're not fully into flu season at this point. We also have to vet out what's this look like if we have to go fully remote. So we're going to do both of them concurrently. That one's a little bit easier, in my opinion, to be able to see what does fully remote look like compared to bringing back kids full-time. But we have to be prepared for all of them, and we don't want this to be on our heels again, so we're going to do, start that work now. And then I would suggest in the next couple of meetings, we can talk about, we'll have a little bit more data behind us, and we can talk a little bit more about what we would like to do as a district to move forward with either one of those plans.
I think it's more fair to say, to continue that work, because we know that that happened all summer long as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So, because we're not starting by any means from square one.
No, it was nice that we had, we took everything and put it in charts, um, and tried to come up with like, almost like the brain dump first, and then to vet that brain dump into actual action items.
But I'm glad that you did bring up the coding, because, uh, I really have no idea what's going to happen with Chelmsford, but we would be going into our third week.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that people have, had questions, because, you know, the Department of Education said, three weeks in the red, you go remote. I think there's a difference between community, you know, wide, um, cases versus clusters that can be identified that are not necessarily related to the schools. And I don't know if we have any information on that, but I do think at some point we do need to let parents know what's going on, because I think there is, um, maybe the impression from some people that another week in red and then we're going to go remote. And I don't know that that's necessarily accurate because of where, uh, the cases were clustered.
Correct. I think we talked about that the last meeting, that we had a couple of facilities that, um, where the, there was an uptick, obviously, which then made Chelmsford go into the red, and that's still seen, as my underst-
Not, not school facilities.
Not school facilities, outside of the Chelmsford Public Schools. And that is our understanding at this given time that that's still the case, right? So those are not issues at the school level, they're issues outside of the Chelmsford Public Schools, which would lead us to say, you know, this, actually, Kingsborough went through this as well. So it's, what would make us make that change? And I don't necessarily believe that if it's outside the Chelmsford Public Schools that we would say we're going to go completely, um, out, remote.
Right. And people may not be aware of, of the fact that, you know, that it may be, um, clustered in a specific area. They're just saying, you know, it's red.
Yep.
Everybody's waiting for six o'clock tomorrow.
Right, right.
Um, so-
Um, Sue Rosa put together a nice document last week-
Okay.
-that we put in the smore, and we can put that back out. Like, I try to keep certain things, like, at the bottom of it, and then anything new Dr. Lang puts in-
Yeah, she spelled it out pretty carefully.
Yeah.
But I know that there's been a, you know, I know that we've seen more cases of kids, not necessarily, again, in school, but, you know, I think that whatever we can do to kind of clarify, um, some of this information that's out there-
Right.
-um, so that people are reassured that-
Mm-hmm.
-as we're entering flu season, we're in the red, that we're not ignoring people's health and safety.
Right. And that's why, and we do have to be prepared for if we needed to go out completely. That's why you can't just ignore complete remote, because you don't want it to be like, it's not going to be like, oh, it's red and tomorrow everybody's out.
Right.
Right? That would have to be more of a, a larger emergency situation, which is not where we're at at this point. So we're going to continue in that fashion, but be prepared at the same time. And, um, I think that's kind of the same piece here. Like, this, that's why we kind of combine these two together, because that is that decision-making policy, that we have to dig deeper into the data and not just go, it's red, time to do this. What, what's making it red? And of course, if it was the schools, we would then make that decision to, to bring kids out of the schools.
Right. But I know as we're talking about going, extending the day, you know, relaxing some of these protocols and things like that, I don't want to have it appear that we're not cognizant of the fact that we're, that we're in the red right now.
Right. And we, we had that discussion. I don't know if we want to go into the, the protocols, because at this point, we, our protocols are a little bit more, um, rigorous than maybe perhaps other school districts, however they work. So that's a discussion, I think, for the, for, should we take a look at maybe perhaps changing them a little bit in the, the amount of time out or the testing? That's the conversations that are happening, and we discuss that again too as an admin team, to have those conversations at the schools. Because if it's working, you hate to, you know, change it. However, it is, um, it, it, it's kind of restricting, right? So for example, if you had to be out because you, one of your students may have been contacted with it, you're out for two weeks. What happens if that happens to you two weeks later? You're out again, and are you out again, right? So what is the, how is that protocol actually working in the long-term if it's affecting us? Right.
We were saying, if we're going to make any sort of change too, that, that's going to kind of coordinate with any changes to the models-
Right.
-and people's having their options to change from remote to hybrid, because those Because those are, those are going to factor in people's decisions. So, it all has to almost all come together at the same time. And, you know, as I'm looking at the calendar, I'm like, well, we're going to, our next meeting is going to be November 6th.
Right, right.
So, a lot is going to have to come together.
It's going to have to happen in the next couple of weeks.
And the community piece because we don't know what the numbers are going to look like at that point, you know? And, or, you know, even before then for that matter. And I think it is something that we, we are in flu season. And I think these are things that we really have to pay very close attention to. And I think we, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I think we decided at the beginning of this process, the health and safety were-
Number one.
Right at number one top priority. And I don't think that we can, we can ignore that. So, I would like to take a look at the data and see what it says, hear what some of the suggestions are. And, you know, see where we are at that particular point. You know, I think that we also really have to continue to send Jeff's message, which is that this is a community effort. And that people have to do their parts because, you know, we've enjoyed pretty low numbers, I think, at the schools. And we want to keep it going that way as long as we possibly can.
And we, we don't want to make any changes in protocols that's going to put anybody at any risk, right?
But that's going to involve the community piece too, right? People doing what they need to do outside of school so that that way we can do what we need to do inside of school.
Maybe we could bring in, we said before Peggy and Sue for our, next time we have the discussion. And they can really go into the community piece and the safety piece, you know? So, as we're making these decisions, we're making them with as much information as we can.
I do know that again about messaging that last week, Principal Murray sent out another message about we're all in all of this together, which needs to remain consistent. But I do get a lot of folks asking, when is the decision going to be made to go remote? When would it be made and so on? So, I think that we have to put that very clearly on our next agenda. And make absolutely sure that people understand and that we're very clear about what's being done. And the quarantining and listen, my kids have been part of one of the quarantines. They're out 14 days and no matter that they got the negative test, they still had to be out the 14 days. I totally understand. I also understand that if I'm a staff member there, that I want to make sure that all of the rules are being observed as much as possible. Because otherwise, this is not going to work. So, all of those things, I think we need to talk about very carefully. And that should be a key agenda item for our next meeting about what that dashboard looks like. Because there have been some things outside of the school. We are not going to message every single time or we haven't. But they happened outside of the school. They didn't happen in the school. So, didn't lead to quarantines in the school. Luckily, I think in many ways, so.
And I think the message I've heard from Superintendent Lang is that, you know, they do all the contact tracing. They do all the quarantine and there had been no instances of somebody in the schools getting sick from somebody from the outside bringing it in. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, so what's, like we said, the protocols are working, right? So, even if we quarantined, everybody getting tested is not coming back positive, right? So, that happened started at the elementary level. We had the case obviously at the high school level. So, that tells you it's working. So, you need to be careful when you make any adjustments because once you do that, it's a domino effect, right? But we're just also not trying to penalize people for longer periods of time as well. So, I just know that we have a very strict policy, but we went in with the safety-first message. And we would like to stick with that. And if there is an adjustment that can be made. But I agree with Dennis that we have to make that adjustment before we can then say, hey, we're looking to go full day. Because you need to have your protocol in place before somebody can make a decision of they would be comfortable with their kids being in school for the full day if it's on their A or B cohort day.
And ultimately, the decision will have to come down to what parents feel most comfortable.
Correct.
And I don't think we, you know, I think that that's another thing that we have to make sure that we're very clear about is that, you know, whatever we do with the protocols, parents still ultimately have the right to make the choice for what they feel is best for their kids.
Yep.
Now, Superintendent mentioned about putting some sort of COVID dashboard on the website. Have we done that? Are we-
Yeah, we, I know we're still switching to the other website and we only have certain nuances. But we're going to try and put that up on our current website until we obviously switch over to the new one. And then, we keep it obviously on the newsletter weekly so that if anybody wants to go back, they could click. Those are live links, right? So, you click on those live links and it brings you to the state dashboard and gives you the information. So, yeah, we're working on putting that together. And then, that way people can have it right available for them.
That would be good.
Yep, I agree.
So, it sounds like we'll have a very busy next meeting.
We're going to have a very busy next-
A lot of discussions, a lot of, you know?
But the good news is that that work's already starting though. Because we talked about it today and we'll put those working groups together, not wait until the next meeting and then put groups together. So, that will happen at those levels. And we at least have some work to start off with because we started the work this summer. And we can see where the adjustments are. The other good news too is that, you know, there are several communities that went full day on their cohort days to begin with. So, we can look at what's working for them and what isn't working for them right in the, in the general area. And we can find out how they were able to work with certain parameters. And if we're comfortable with those parameters, what that would look, how that would translate into our schools. It's always good, we're collaborating with the other school districts. We're going to see what they did and see what works for us.
A little off, well, not, sort of kind of topic, I mean, in terms of transition. We did switch the middle school schedule a little bit. How did that work out?
That's working out better, much better.
Okay, all right.
That was helpful.
We haven't had a lot of emails.
Yeah, like certain things are not, like, they're not happening in real time. Like, I was even thinking we had those meetings on the webinars, right? There was an issue with attendance. The extension came out for how to take attendance, right? So, those people were saying like we're struggling with some of the attendance. And then, Google came out with their extension, right? So, sometimes you hear things or we've had meetings about things or webinars and something has changed like technology-wise or something that we're able to provide people with. So, getting those little updates probably would be helpful as well so that you know that there has been a change and it was a natural change.
Great. Anybody else question, comments on models, future, present? All right, all right, so moving on, our next item is the MAS-C resolution. So, we talked about in the last meeting that the MAS-C is having a virtual conference on the 7th, I think?
Yes.
Yeah, 7th. John volunteered to be our representative on that. So, at that conference, they vote in office, they also vote on a number of different resolutions. So, in our package tonight, we have the 10 different resolutions that are being proposed. Donna has graciously volunteered to read the resolutions. And then, we can have discussions on them and we can vote as a body how, if we want to support them, not support them. And then, John will vote accordingly at the meeting. So, I'll let Donna take over.
All right, so this is resolution number one, MCAS and high-stakes testing. And this is from the MAS-C. Therefore, be it resolved that the MAS-C rejects the calls for students of the 2022 who missed their 10th grade MCAS testing to be required to make it up during the 2021 school year or ever. We demand that those students be held harmless for not taking the MCAS and that their graduation requirement shall be determined by locally and controlled voices of the school committee and school administration within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Additionally, we reiterate our call for a moratorium on all high-stakes testing for the 2021 school year so all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction. And we urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing of three years.
Okay, any questions on the resolution? I'll let John, if you want to make the motions.
Uh, yeah, I haven't done that in a while.
You could just say, you know, I-
I make a motion that we approve the resolution number one.
Nice, all right. I make a motion to approve resolution number one, MCAS and high-stakes testing.
Second, Jeff's second, okay, so motion second. Any questions or thoughts on this?
I agree with that.
I wholeheartedly agree with that.
I agree with it, no doubt.
Hundred percent.
Having not been the biggest advocate of test testing.
I personally, the only hesitation I have is I don't think it's that fair to other students who already had to do it. Who are within this three, but anyway, there it is.
It's not fair to other students that these students had to deal with COVID. I mean, in remote learning.
Well, it's true, but the students who already had to do it had to deal with COVID too. So, it's, it's okay, I understand. I understand why and I'm going to go with it.
You know, I think about, so one of my concerns was is for kids who, you know, they don't have the technology.
Right.
Or things like this at home. You know, it's, you know, I think we're relatively fortunate in Chelmsford. But there are a lot of places across the state that they're really struggling and the gap is widening.
Yes.
Didn't they cancel it last spring?
They did, but right now, we're still waiting for additional guidance to come out. What they've said is that the current juniors can voluntarily take it in the spring. However, it's still a CD requirement, which is a competency determine requirement to graduate. So, you can't have a voluntary mandatory-
No.
Test, right? We're struggling with that. The only question I would ever have beyond that, like whatever they come up with is, you know, what's the fairness going to be? Are they going to offer the Abigail Adams Scholarship? And how would they-
Right.
Provide that for these students that are not going to have an opportunity? I know it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but when you go into state school and you're putting your pennies together and trying to get through college, it helps when you get that, that little boost on the tuition bill.
It's true.
It's very, like that and Copleck, I would just want, that would be my question around it.
It's a very small amount, yes, Donna, we know.
But I, I took it with my daughter, my kids, and I was thrilled when I saw it on the bill.
All right, any other thoughts on this resolution? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving resolution one? Aye. Anybody opposed?
Right, five zero. Resolution two, COVID-19 state funding. From MAS-C, therefore be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19.
So, do the, okay. I make a motion to support resolution two, COVID-19 state funding.
Second, motion second. Any questions or thoughts on this one?
Makes sense to me.
Seems like a no-brainer in terms of supporting it. Whether that comes to fruition is a whole other thing, you know? With a lot of things. All right, so all in favor of supporting resolution two?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
Resolution three, school committee anti-racism resolution. From MAS-C, therefore be it resolved that all the school districts in the Commonwealth should guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded and practiced for our students, families, faculty, and staff. School committee members should ensure that our school culture and that, and that of every district in the Commonwealth is an anti-racist, is anti-racist and that acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matter.
I make a motion to support resolution three, school committee anti-racism resolution.
Second, motion second. Any comments on resolution three? Okay, all in favor of supporting resolution three? Aye. Any opposed? Five zero.
Resolution four, lowering the voting age for municipal elections. From MAS-C, therefore be it resolved that the sponsors call upon the Massachusetts Legislature to pass the Empower Act and take the other means necessary to allow cities and towns to establish a minimum voting age of 16 years for all municipal elections.
Second.
I make a motion to support resolution four, lowering the voting age for municipal elections.
Second. Okay, any thoughts on this one?
Yes, I'm thinking of my two 16-year-old voting.
Yeah, I have, yeah.
I am thinking of it.
I get the idea, but, you know, I could see some pitfalls to it as well, particularly in municipal elections.
Well, I think also in terms of us as a body, having high schoolers be able to vote on who makes, who are the members of the school committee and who aren't the members of the school committee, I think is actually important. So, I'm looking at it from two ways because I think that allows students to also have input into their education. It's only on municipal. It also gives these younger folks a right to start voicing their concerns and providing their input into the community a lot earlier. So, I, I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I'm thinking of my two 16-year-olds voting right now and making decisions like this. And they need to start getting ready and a better, no better place to practice than the municipal level.
Yeah, I agree with Maria.
I would hope, I would hope they would take their responsibility seriously. And, you know, again, you know, they're kids, you know, and you never know. They might, oh, it's just for so-and-so and, you know, because it's funny, you know? That would be my only concern is that they wouldn't take it as seriously as they should.
I actually wish it was more than just municipal, to be perfectly honest with you. And I think that one of the things that we've seen, not just, not just with our younger population, but just across the board is that people are becoming disengaged from, you know, volunteering or serving in some type of office. So, I think if this is going to help encourage that, then, then we should support it.
Any other thoughts? Okay, all in favor of supporting resolution four?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, five zero.
Resolution five, supporting increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K-12 education. From MAS-C, therefore be it resolved that the MAS-C align with state superintendents of schools and urge the Massachusetts Congressional delegation and state legislators to advocate for and approve additional education funding for our nation's public schools throughout the enactment of progressive tax legislation.
I make a motion to support resolution five, supporting increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K through 12 education.
Second. All right, any discussion on this? Again, seems like something we would want to get behind. All in favor of resolution five?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Five zero.
Resol, excuse me. Resolution six, retention of Medicaid revenue. From MAS-C, therefore be it resolved that MAS-C urges the General Court to require that 100% of Medicaid reimbursements to cities and towns be provided in full amount to the public schools of each municipality through a school district revolving account to underwrite the cost of providing inadequate education.
I make a motion to support resolution six, retention of Medicaid revenue.
Second. Any thoughts, questions?
If there is a topic I know a little about, it is Medicaid. Where does the money go now?
I was going to actually ask Joanna because is this resolution saying that those, if, if somebody says, here's my Medicaid information and the town gets the money, is saying the town has to give it to the schools? Or is it saying that the parents have to give their Medicaid information?
I think it's saying, your first point.
Okay.
That when the money comes to the town, the town needs to give it to the schools.
Okay, because that was, because I know there are situations where people are asked for it and they, because of home services, they, they may say, no, I don't feel, you know, I don't want to lose home services. So, I don't want to force people to have to give that information when, you know, there's a reason why they're not. So, if it's people that are agreeing that, yes, here's my information and it goes to the town, we're just making sure that the schools get that. That's, I think that's-
And just so you know, in the, in our town of Chelmsford, it stays with the town. However, the next sentence is, we are above net school spending and the town does give us funding above our minimum requirement. So, while that particular earmark of Medicaid does not come to a school revolving fund, it, you know, it does go to the town and, but we have very fortunate-
We benefit from a lot of support from the town.
So, would this make, would this make that more difficult for us if this, something like this would have passed or?
It would just, it would take the decision away. And it, almost like, you know, chapter 70 comes to the schools. And this is saying Medicaid would come to the schools. It's just making it, defining it rather than having it today. It's a discussion between the town and the school department.
Do you see this as a beneficial resolution or?
I could see for some districts, it would be very beneficial. I think for Chelmsford, we happen to be very well-supported by the town. So, I don't think it'll change things much for us, but I could-
I agree with that. I think we are well-supported by the town.
If it comes to us, you know, imagine there would be an adjustment. Do you know what I'm saying? So, you know, here's your Medicaid reimbursements, adjust the budget accordingly.
Right.
Is the way I see it would happen.
Right, you know, so not supporting it, it's not going to hurt us or help us, but not supporting it is going to hurt other towns if this were something that was able to be pushed through.
And just to clarify, this is Medicaid reimbursements for school-aged children.
Correct, yeah, okay. All right, so any other thoughts? Okay, we'll vote all in favor of supporting resolution six?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Resolution seven, attempts by the United States Department of Education to direct funding to private schools. From MAS-C, therefore be it resolved that MAS-C petition the Attorney General of Massachusetts to review and recommend to the Executive Office of Education and the Mass Department of Elementary Education to review the formal language of such statutes that determine the distribution of federal funds to benefit economically disadvantaged students and further that the Attorney General provide legal guidance to state agencies in Massachusetts to implement such formulas based on the actual language and legislative intent of the statute, should that be in variance with any advisory issued by the United States Secretary of Education. So, pronouns, I've never read one.
I like it, I like, you killed it, you did it. I make a motion to support resolution seven, attempts by U.S. DOE to direct funding to private schools.
Second. Any thoughts or discussion on this?
Yeah, I think public money shouldn't be in a private enterprise, whether it's a school or anything else. So, I support this.
And I will be abstaining from this because I am employed by private schools, so.
I think it's actually sad that the state and the federal should be pitting, you know, one, one against the other and that we need to make sure that our state interprets it in a way that it actually does what the statute intends it to do. But anyway, you know, we're in public education and the funds should be coming to public education.
All right, all in favor of supporting resolution seven?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention?
Aye.
Four, zero, one.
Resolution eight, membership of a school committee member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Well, there it is, sorry. From MAS-C, therefore be it resolved that MAS-C submit to the General Court proposed legislation that Mass General Law, Chapter 15, Section 1E be revised as follows.
I just read the last, the underlined statement, they want to add.
Oh, yeah, I can see, yes, thank you. One representative, so this is, this is what they want to change in the statute, okay? One representative from a school committee from a list of three nominees provided by the Mass Association of School Committees and five additional- the Mass Association of School Committees, and five additional members. So it would be to add them to.
Correct.
I make a motion to support Resolution Eight, Membership of a School Committee Member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Second. All right, any questions on this one? So basically, they just want to add to the board by adding in a representative from the school committee, which I think...
It's a good idea, they should add some teachers, too.
So this, what Donna read at the end was just the addition to the, the current makeup of the board. All right, any other thoughts on this? Okay, all in favor of supporting Resolution Eight?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five zero.
Resolution Nine, Providing Equity for Sexual Orientation LGBTQ Students, Teachers, and Staff. From MAS C, therefore it be, be it resolved that MAS C file legislation and petition our federal legislative delegation to also file legislation, which would have the effect of adding sexual orientation and gender, gender identity to the list of protected classes in order to provide equity and support our LGBTQ students, teachers, and staff, and petition our legislative delegation, and, yes, and petition our legislative delegation. Is there more? No.
Period.
Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to see if there was more up at the top.
I make a motion, a motion. I make a motion to support Resolution Nine, Providing Equality for Sexual Orientation LGBTQ Plus Students, Teachers, and Staff.
Second. Okay, any comments on this particular one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Five zero.
Resolution Ten, Relative to the Monitoring of Attendance of Students During the Pandemic. From MAS C, therefore be it resolved that MAS C advocate for legislation and regulation that protect the rights of parents to withhold their children from school for reasons of their health status or health risk and further. That MAS C advocate for regulations that holds districts accountable for the attendance of students, provide appropriate exemptions for students who experience or require extended absences from school due to health-related issues or concerns, concerns due to the COVID-19 pandemic and further. That MAS C petition the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to waive all accountability requirements regarding attendance for the 2020-2021 school year, and that such regulations exempt districts from sanctioned status based on, on the basis of attendance when such absences are related to the public health crisis, including COVID-19.
I make a motion to support Resolution Ten, Relative to the Monitoring of Attendance of Students During the Pandemic.
Second. All right, thoughts on this one? This one is...
I don't want to, the only thing is I don't want to, I think we have to make a distinction here, okay? There's health risks and health-related issues.
Yeah.
But not showing up to class during a pandemic is not...
Right.
Okay, do you know what I'm saying? Like, I want to make sure that, that, that our staff understands that we're not trying to say free pass for everyone. Does that, does that make sense? And this is where, I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope, you know, especially with the...
I agree, this language is too general.
Second post to that point, yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to think what it said.
Waive all accountability.
Yes, yeah, that was it, thank you.
When the other attendants grew, so...
Yeah, I, I mean, this is, this is not something that sits very well with me, in the sense that because there's a pandemic, you can just have a, a free pass. We need to get kids in school, we know that that's where they're best supported, and this is, I feel like they're trying to do two things at the same time here. Yes, parents have the right, because they can go remote, but they still need to come to school. I feel like they already have received the opportunity, they have a way to handle the pandemic because of health risks, but not showing up to school at all, whether it's in, online or in person, I think is, is just going down a bad path.
And I think we've been pretty flexible, at least in our district.
Yeah, we have.
Something happens, or, but yeah, I kind of see, the kids have to be at school.
Right, so I think they have the opportunity, because they can go fully remote, if they have a concern about the pandemic.
Well, I will say this, okay, on the flip side, because I can see both sides. You know, sometimes we have, you know, we may have kids at home helping a younger brother or sister, because the parents have to work.
That's true.
And they miss a class. Or their kids are working and missing classes, because now they're the only income for that family.
They shouldn't be working during the school day.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that, but you know, if it's food and roof over your head and school, what, what are you going to do, right? You know? You know, we had, through the spring, a lot of kids that could pick up extra hours, like at Market Basket, and were helping to support their families. And so I think that, you know, it's, it is, it's tricky, it's tricky, because there's, you know, it may not necessarily be health-related, you may be, it may be a technology issue. It could be a lot of different things. So I think that, you know, I, I think that if, if we don't support this, then I think that we have to be really, really clear to our families. The communication is the most important thing, and that, you know, we have to be having these conversations, and we want to support you, and not penalize kids because they can't be in school for reasons that maybe beyond their control.
But that's always been the case.
Yeah, we have night school, we have, we have, we have different programming for them.
And it, you know, there's always been the case of somebody had a reason to be out, that whether it was the teacher, the individual teacher, or an administrator who would decide whether or not that was, you know, an excused absence. So I don't know if...
You know, I agree, it's always been the case.
Right.
And I just think that, you know, but I think these are different circumstances, and we may see more absences than we may have typically seen in the past, and, you know, parents have their hands full right now. You know, I just think we have to be careful. I'm not necessarily, you know, it's funny, I seem like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, and I am, because I, I don't really support this, but I get all of the things that can get in the way of kids coming to school.
Right.
But also keep in mind, you know, one of the policies we kind of voted on with the emergency was that a little bit more flexibility in the attendance.
Right.
So I mean, we probably have an attendance policy, you, if you miss fifteen days, you're done.
Right.
And that's something now with, with what we approve, we, we can offer that flexibility and, and speak with the families, say, you know, what's going on, and so...
The hell harmless should be on the school districts, who are trying to work with these families to get them what they need. Not necessarily that you're held harmless from going to school, that would just be my, my thoughts on it.
All right, anything else on that?
Tough one.
So we'll vote, any, all in favor of approving Resolution Ten? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye, any abstentions? Okay, five, five zero against. All right, thank you all. Donna, thank you for volunteering to do that.
Thanks, Donna.
Now you regretted it, well...
I need water now.
Okay, all right, so moving on, the next item on our agenda are school committee goals and superintendent goals, so as we discussed in, in previous meetings, it, this year it made more sense to kind of concentrate on some shorter-term goals, to try to help get us through this unusual year. So to that end, what I did is I tried to kind of keep things within the same framework we've been working, we've really had three kind of major focuses, academic programming, social emotional well-being, and financial and facilities operations. So I tried to keep, you know, things sort of in that, that same framework, but then tried to put in, things that are more specific to getting us through this year, I guess, you know? So, for example, in the supporting academic programs during the 2020-21 school year, the school committee will support the district plan to provide educational programming to students in whatever learning model is deemed safest and most appropriate, given available health metrics and guidance from the state and local agencies, okay? And then there are a number of different action steps that go along with that, in terms of communicating with stakeholders, working with local and state health officials, monitoring the needs of the district in terms of technology, keeping an eye on, on the students from last spring, and, and going through this year academically, how they're progressing, those type of things. So that was in that area, in, in terms of social emotional, social emotional, or maintaining a positive, inclusive, pro-social learning environment during the 2020-21 school year, the school committee, in collaboration with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of student support services, and other stakeholders, will monitor our current programming, investigate new programming that promotes the social, emotional well-being, mental health of all students and staff, and assist in cultivating positive, inclusive, safe learning environments for all. And again, there are a number of action steps that go along with that, in terms of looking at our current programming, and any kind of new programming, keeping an eye on special groups, special education, ELL students. I had a point in there on equity and diversity, my computer's not working for me, okay, here we go. Promote programming of students and staff parents to increase awareness of issues of equity, diversity. I didn't want to say something about just general health, like making sure kids have food to eat, and that they, they can have a way to get to school, and I don't know if this was the appropriate place to put it, but that's where I ended up putting it. And then last area, major area is aligning financial and facilities resources during school, 2020-21 school year, school committee will work with superintendent, school personnel, and autonomous to monitor current finances, current year finances, develop and align sustainable financial foundation for the following fiscal years, given the unique needs and financial constraints, survival for the COVID pandemic, includes for providing all the necessary staffing, safety, technology, and facility needs of the district. And again, the action items there about budgeting, about PPE, health and safety, buildings, safety, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what I came up with, and then our, our personal, our professional goals are more or less the same, just kind of, again, more focused in towards this year, as far as communication. We still need to work on a strategic plan eventually, and then staying engaged with state and local organizations. So that's what I put together for us. I know that superintendent did a very similar thing for his own goals, kind of narrowing down the focus to supporting the district through this particular school year. I noticed a lot, so if, if, and the superintendent isn't here right now, it's really...
He isn't here, but I could tell you that these mirror, these aren't that far off from the original strategic plan, like we, we got a little derailed, because we were in the process of completing the next strategic plan, and then COVID came along. But if you look at what these items are, it's still keeping the integrity of the, you know, the academic, the whole MTSS initiative that we have going on, but then just making a little shift to make it more specific for this school year. I know I'm talking about somebody else's goals, but I feel comfortable enough to be able to say that. And then obviously, you have to have a financial plan behind any goals you have, it sounds all well and good, but if you don't have the money to support it, you know, that, that's necessary.
So we can change it, we can add to it, we can take away from it.
Notes.
It's a very, you know, fluid document on our end, obviously, we'll have to wait for the superintendent.
Yeah, I could take notes on anything that you'd like to see.
Right, you know, to discuss his goals. So any thoughts at this point? Do we need another, like another time period to kind of digest it all? I don't know.
I'd like time to digest it, but I do like to focus on health, I think that's, I mean, it's an obvious importance right now, so that's good.
I, I think we should give ourselves time to think this through, but also I think it would be important to have the superintendent present at the discussion. There are a couple of things that I think I would like to add in here, I can bring it up at the next discussion. I think it needs, especially on the maintaining of positive, inclusive, and pro-social learning environment, I think staff needs to be added in there somehow, so supporting them as well, in a more inclusive way. And so there were a couple of things that I would, I would want to do here, but just overall, it, it really saddened me when I read this, that we're going to spend one entire year focusing on just getting through it, which is essentially what this is. So one of the things I think we should really consider is that we will review this, actually, probably quarterly at least, because hopefully, we can come out of it sooner rather than later, and I hate to think that next year, we're facing so many drawbacks as a result of this year. In other words, I think no matter how hard we're all going to try, that we may not be able to teach everything that we taught in the past, in a one-year period, to our students, given the method of teaching. And so, and, and of course, we're competing with everybody else, we're in this, everybody might be in the same boat, but I would like to see us look at it again on a quarterly basis, and see how we can help transition to the next year, and making sure that everybody is as much to level as they can be in the district for the coming year. And again, very sad to even think an entire year is given to this, and survival.
And we might have to do it more on a thirdly, because we're already quarter through the year. So I know last year, we, we reviewed our goals in January-ish, February-ish, so we'll probably, could, we could probably do something similar, and see where we're at, and hopefully things are improving, and, you know, you know, and I, you know, I don't think we're, we're saying to stop everything we do, I think we still, when the opportunity presents up, can work on the strategic plan, you know, continue to, to, you know, work on things that we wanted to work on if that hadn't happened, but, you know, I think right now what the focus is, to try to get us through a very unusual situation, so.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thank you.
And I agree that, I think that we do need to take a look at these, and it's, in some cases, we almost need action steps for our action steps. So I think that not only reviewing them, but talking about a plan for, you know, what it is that we would like to see, or how it is that we would like to see these operationalized as we go forward.
I duly admit, I did not write them as SMART goals, I did not write them, you know, and, so I'm sure Linda will slap my hand later, because, but, no, I didn't, and I really, I just, I, I just wanted to get something to work from.
Right, and I agree.
We can definitely do that, we can try to make them work.
I don't think we need to, I just think that we just have to say, okay, you know, that, you know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna measure this?
Exactly, that's, that's the part, that's the part of the SMART goal, is it not there, the measurement part, so, and I will gladly admit that, yeah, I got to that point and said, okay. All right, so let's do that, let's, let's digest this for, you know, between now and next meeting. If you have suggestions, you know, send them to me, and, you know, I can, I can tweak things, if you can think of maybe ways of, of coming up with some measurable for each of those, Donna or anybody, let me know, and we can work that in, and then maybe, you know, at the next meeting, if we can get all this stuff in there, we can approve our goals, we can talk to the superintendent about his goals, and, and we'll get moving on them. Any questions on superintendent's goals that this superintendent could pass along?
Yeah, I can take notes for you.
Again, very similar type of thing, where, you know, within the frameworks, but more focused on, you know, this particular year. Good? Okay, all right, so move on to the next item, which is back to Joanna on 2020-21, excuse me, Fiscal Year Twenty-One Financial Report.
Okay, thank you. So this is our quarterly update for the local budget, and the grants and revolving funds, and the student activity accounts. The first time you've seen this for Fiscal Twenty-One, so we're in very good shape. Some of the variances in labor are very well seen right away after the first, you know, the month of September, so I'm trying to highlight those right off the bat. So we are favorable in our classroom teacher category, right now, $414,195. Part of this variance, a favorable variance, is due to a little bit in the lane change account, and this favorable variance will stay with us all year. We had budgeted $108,985, and you had already approved the budget transfer for those teachers who had achieved a higher degree of $84,290. So we're going to be favorable in this category for the rest of the year, $24,695. Just keep that in mind for later in the year, when we'd like to reallocate some of our resources. And then as in prior years, we're favorable in the labor accounts, because, you know, when a teacher left, the district retired, we budget them in a master step three for the following year, whoever's coming in. And some people come in a little higher than that, some people don't have those credentials. And when that, all those ins and outs, and movements and transfers, my estimate is we're favorable by $260,000. We'll know more as the year goes, because we, this year is a little unique, because we had approved unpaid leaves of absence, so with the MOU signed by, in mid-September. So I'm still quantifying that. We are bringing in interim teachers for the rest of the year, who weren't encumbered right off the bat in September, so there'll still be some more encumbrances, so I don't think we're going to be at that $414,000 all year, I think it's going to come down, but we'll know more in a month or so. And then the same is true in the next teacher category, the specialist teachers, it's just the way the report flows, we're favorable there, $114,287, same reasons as above. And then just as a reminder, we have an offset to the CHIPS revolving fund in this category of $115,000, that we would normally make that journal entry in the fourth quarter, to have the revolving fund fund some of those teachers, and if we do end up needing to do that, this category would be even more favorable. We have plenty of time to see if we'll need to make that offset. The next page is special ed tuitions, and I, same format as in prior years, but again, it's the first time you've seen this for this year. We budget special ed tuitions in three, actually, this year, just two places. We budget special ed tuitions in three, actually this year, just two places. The local tuitions account and the circuit breaker revolving fund. This year, we decided not to fund any of the sped tuitions from the school choice revolving fund, because we're using that for all the one-on-one initiatives. But I still included school choice on the third page, just because you're used to seeing it, and it's, it's in good shape. So the top category is just a reminder of all the special ed tuitions. We expect, we budgeted 6.4 million. We are anticipating an offset of 3.1 million to circuit breaker. We budgeted the valley credit offset of $132,000. We had prepaid tuitions last year, remember, three months' worth. We had budgeted $962,000. So at the end of the day, the local budget would be funding 2.199 million of sped tuitions. So that's in the budget, that's in that page of the budget book. Since that time, more has, we have more information. And that's what the chart is. I added like kind of a new chart to show how have things changed from our original budget from last spring. Just kind of going down the line. Prepaid tuitions, we actually ended up prepaying a little more than the $962,000. You had approved at the meeting last spring, we could go up to 1.3 million, and we came in at 1299724. So right off the bat, we're going to be favorable because we prepaid more. The other thing is, in looking at the list of students, it's actually a good news story. We're not spending as much in sped tuitions, because some students did move out of the district, which happens. Some could still move back in, but we don't know that yet. Some students have actually come back to programs that we are providing in-house. So that's saving money in the out-of-district tuitions category. So at this time, what's encumbered is 4.2 million, that we know pretty darn sure. In talking with Amy Reese, we know of another encumbrance that's, it's a private school who we've had, but we needed to talk with them about their OSD rates. And that we know is going to be, for a few students, $240,000, which wasn't in the September report. So that brings us up to this 5.7 million. I'm going to leave the circuit breaker offset at 3.1 million for now, because we just don't know. And plus, the governor's budget, we don't even know what our reimbursement rate is going to be. So I'll have that update, as soon as I know, we'll bring it to the committee. The valley credit came in much greater than the $132,000 we had put in the budget. It came in at $537,000. So that's going to bring us more favorable. I already talked about prepaid tuitions. So when it's all said and done, and again, we don't know, things could change, this category could be, you know, favorable in the range of $700,000 to 1.4 million. But again, it's very early, it's only, you know, this is September data. Children could move in, children could move out, but just reporting on this early, since it's such a, a big part of our local budget.
What was the 240? What are they saying that that's going to be?
Oh, I have the students' names. We just, I didn't, didn't encumber it for the September report.
Okay.
We, we knew about it. It's in Amy's budget, but we didn't put in the purchase order right in that month, because she was working out with the OSD rates and the programming for those students at that school.
Are we going to see rate changes throughout this year?
I don't think so. They did already, some of them have submitted some changes, but usually it levels out by October, and then you kind of, you know what, what you're dealing with for the year. And then the last page is, again, it's school choice revolving fund. Normally, I include this because it helps fund special ed tuitions. This particular year, it is not, but it's just funding all technology. And right now, you know, our balance is, we started the year at close to 1.8 million. We've gotten a few school choice revenue payments in, so we were up to 1.85 million. We're expecting overall another $174,000 for the rest of the months. That'll bring us up over 2 million. And we know of two payments that'll be happening this year for the leases for the Chromebooks, for the one-on-one initiative in grades five and nine, and grade six and 10. So we're estimating our balance at the end of the year will be close to 1.9 million. And that was the plan, that this fund would sustain this initiative for grades five through 12.
Were we affected on school choice at all with the, like in terms of the enrollment?
I'll get that final number from when we do our October reporting. It's still, it's not quite 50, but then you do get a little, in addition to the 5,000 per student, you get additional funds if you're providing special ed services. So that's a little tough to forecast, because you don't know what that's going to equate to, but it's usually, you know, more. And then, so I'm kind of conservative.
Yeah, I was just curious if that had any effect.
I, I would like to, at some point in the future, talk about, because we had the one-on-one initiative, and we had a plan for how we were going to roll that out, and how we were going to make that a sustainable program. And then the pandemic happened, and we rolled it out so much faster than we had to. And then at some point, these devices are going to have to be updated or replaced, and I, you know, I, I think it kind of blew our plan out of the water, so I'd like to know what our new plan is going to be at some point in the future.
Yeah, we can have Bill speak to that, but I think what you're talking about, though, is also more for a big surgeon grades K to eight.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about, exactly.
Yeah, we had a plan for five through 12. It's now assuming in the K4 students on top of that.
Right, and, and, right, because by the time they, you know, get to the fourth grade, they may need new devices, and so, you know, we have to figure out a new plan for this now.
And all those are purchases, not a lease.
Right.
And they, right now, they have all our, for the most part, they have old ones. We're trying to get the new ones in, is that, you know, we haven't got the new ones in yet.
Correct.
It's kind of blew our budget out of the water in terms of, I don't mean, I mean in terms of our plan, when we were rolling this out.
Right.
Someone was coming through the COVID relief, right?
Right, yeah.
The maintaining of going forward now, I know quite a few students also don't have the school-issue Chromebook. It'll be important for us to know what the numbers are, and, you know, who's got a school, how many are there actually? And whether all the staff has a Chromebook, because many are waiting.
They're still waiting, yes.
For the delivery either later this month or in November, we hope.
Right. It, it hasn't changed too much from what the superintendent reported at the last meeting.
Okay. So that's going to be very important for us to know. And already, in some classes, the student has really to have the school-issue Chromebook. If theirs doesn't have touchscreens or whatever, they need to still have that. So I think, again, it, it'll be important for us to know.
So any questions on the, you know, 6 dot, 61 dot 667 million dollar local budget?
So far so good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then anything on the, there's a one page on our grants and revolving funds. It's kind of a colored, the top part is the entitlement grants, the middle part is private grants and circuit breaker, which we all kind of talked about. And then down below are all the revolving funds. I haven't put in an estimated budget on the revolving funds yet, because it's going to be quite a year. So, but, you know, it's, it's tough for, to estimate how much we're going to get in the school nutrition, because we haven't seen this before.
Nothing's going in, nothing's coming out, but, yeah.
Right, so, but we will, and, and we're still just being very conservative with all that spending.
Any questions on the revolving, the activities accounts?
Yep, the, the high school, and then all, all the clubs are, and sports are listed. So the high school's at the 234,000, or sorry, two, yeah, 234. McCarthy is a little over 22,000, and Parker is a little over 47,000.
Any questions on activities accounts? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is the request to convert three part-time techs to one full-time. I don't know, Linda or Joanna?
Yep, no, I could talk about this. So as you know, obviously, our technology department is at the forefront right now, working a tremendous amount of time, trying to, you know, make sure that everybody has what they need, being able to respond to their tickets, being able to help teachers within their classroom. So one of the goals was to have, you know, these three part-time positions put into the budget to help, you know, with the schools and some of the needs. Then, now here we are in our new COVID situation. And what we, what has been noticed by Bill Silver, who's the director of technology, is that the pool has been pretty shallow in terms of getting part-time people. However, you can get some qualified people if it's a full-time position. Plus, the demands are such that having part-time people make it difficult that if they're not available during this time, when somebody really needs to help, having that full-time person would be a better fit. And he's looking to condense those three positions and make it one full-time position in order to both meet the needs of the teachers, but also to get a qualified person in that's available to, for the position itself.
Okay. So we would need to vote on this.
You need to vote on this. You need to, your roll call vote.
Yep. The job description would be the same as any other full-time.
It would.
We're not making any changes there.
Exactly, it would. He would make the adjustments and the qualifications that would be needed for that full-time. And also, there'd probably be a couple of adjustments made for, as a full-time employee, you have a few more demands on you than you would as a part-time.
And the, the total amount's 46,800, is that correct?
It is.
That's just salary, or is that, that would be the impact? I would think if you're going from part-time to full-time, there's, becomes a full-time employee, benefits and so on.
Benefits, that would be a change.
There's a difference. I see the need, though. I'm for this, because I really think that, one, you need continuity in the position, two, you need the level, and it's going to be necessary more and more. Donna just brought up the fact that we have to revisit what's going on now, going forward with the, you know, the one-to-one initiative, which means that more will be needed.
Yep.
And it's not only the students, the faculty and staff, but it's also parents who need this kind of assistance right now. So I, I think it's a no-brainer in terms of, we need to do it.
Right. Donna, you good with a resolution?
I have a, yeah, yes, do you want me to make it and then discuss it?
Sure.
I recommend the school committee reallocate the salary budgeted for three part-time computer technicians to fund one full-time computer technician.
Do we have to give the amount, you think?
In the amount of?
In the amount of $46,800.
Second, second, okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, I agree with Maria. I think it's absolutely necessary. I think technology is the forefront of what we're doing, and whatever support we can offer for our staff and families, kids, so much the better. But I do think that we have to be aware, you know, on the impact, on the municipal side in terms of, you know, benefits and things like that.
Yes.
And I think we have to be, I think we really have to be mindful as we're bringing people on, while it may be absolutely necessary, it increases the burden on the town. And this is, and we know going into next year, it's just not going to be good. So we, I think we just have to be very careful about how we're, how we're hiring people.
Good point.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Donna?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, all right. Back to you, Joanna.
Back to Joanna. So, thank you. This is just one budget transfer before you. It's for $3,472, shifting funds from the textbook accounts at the middle school for social studies into the.
Committee meeting on October 20th, 2020, to approve the FY 2020 local operating budget transfer for the Chelsford Public Schools as presented.
Second. Discussion?
Are these licenses at one-year term?
Yes.
Essentially?
Yes.
And the, the IXL is for social studies still, it's still the same curriculum?
Yeah, IXL has different components, so you, you've heard it for math, you've heard it for ELA, there's a science and a social studies one as well.
Yeah.
So these are social studies specific, and just trying to keep the, the budget pure and putting things in the right place, because when you do forecast budgets, you want to know where the money's going.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, Donna?
I do have a question, I'm sorry. With this, can we use the COVID-19 fund? You know, when we have to make these kinds of changes in terms of curriculum, we have to go to, you know, to get these software licenses, does that come under that?
You're asking the wrong guy.
Does that come under that?
It's, it's a gray area.
Okay.
Because we did the very clear black and white ones, like the Chromebooks, like the clear touch panels, like, you know, just the very black and white. Some of these licenses, I think we would have, we would, we may have done it anyway.
Okay.
You know, not just because.
Fair enough.
So we decided to just stick more with the black and whites and not go in the gray areas.
I didn't know if it was because of this specifically that we were doing it, because of the situation that we're in, that we were specifically getting these licenses, because, only because of this situation, but it sounds like it's more.
Yeah. We would probably continue on with these licenses.
Okay, fair enough.
Great. Donna?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you.
Just want to keep on spending that COVID-19 money.
All right, so the next thing is capital. So I know the capital committee's meeting the end of November.
Right.
All right, so we need to, again, prioritize where we would like to see capital improvements. So superintendent did, included a list of capital projects in the packet. In talking with Joanna, the, the ones in red are ones that we've deferred in the past, so that we, maybe they were on the schedule for a previous year, and in prioritizing, we didn't go with those two projects. The ones in greens, I believe are ones that we're currently doing. Jeff would know too, because he is involved with this. And then we have the, the forecasted ones for FY '22, '23, '24, and '25. All right, so again, I think this is another one of those where we, we're going to need to kind of take a couple of weeks and look over the list, and we'll come back at our next meeting, come up with our prioritized list again, like we did last year, probably do it in a similar fashion of take, you know, the 10, top 10 items that we think, and rank them, and then put Jeff in the arena, and he'll have to duke it out with the rest of the town to, for the capital budget. So any questions on the list or projects?
Who knew doorknobs could be so expensive?
Oh, really?
Right?
Probably are.
I do, since we're on capital, I'd just like to mention that I thought it was wonderful that we got approval yesterday for a town meeting.
Yes.
For our two items.
That was fantastic.
Yes, I was especially pleased at the beginning of the meeting to hear that the values committee included education on its list as one of the first priorities of the town, and what we'd like to be known for. And so we truly appreciate, I do personally, that the town recognized the importance of continuing to move, move forward with these improvements, because buildings are important. And it, for me, it was truly highlighted when I started looking at the fire station that we're replacing, that unless we can continuously maintain these buildings, we could be facing very dire situations in a few years. And so we don't want to be shortsighted, and I appreciate that the town saw that and that all the representatives voted in favor of it.
Okay, so, so I think, you know, for, for the next meeting, if you could just look through, right, and, and look at those, those listed deferred items, and some of them, I'm sure, wouldn't even be in the listing, but some of the, the technology things, I think we've gotten.
That's right.
Probably wouldn't even be on there anymore, but, but some of them were deferred, like the, the lecture hall, something was deferred. So if that's something that, you know, people feel strongly about, that would be something that maybe you'd want to prioritize, but then also... But then also the ones for FY '22, which would be the ones that are coming up in the next, next group of projects. So if people could look, take a look at that, that list. And, and next meeting, we'll kind of try to put something together. And Jeff will be all set to go.
I will have to say it's a very cooperative group, the capital planning. John Souza does a wonderful job setting it up. And all the departments, you know, work well together, so.
All right, so any questions on that? Okay, personnel?
Yep, so you have a report of all the, you know, the ins and outs, the new hires, people that have resigned, as well as any retirements that have gone through that Cheryl put together for you. And here, you'll see a lot of movement happening, obviously, as we go through this whole process of people being either on leaves or leaving the district altogether. So that's why it seems it'll be a little lengthy this time.
Question regarding the nursing position. Is that already filled or are we looking for one?
At the high school? That is not filled. They're in the middle of interviews right now.
Okay, just so important.
At the high school.
The .7 was filled, though.
Oh, the point, okay.
Yeah, but that isn't on here.
That's not on here, no. I thought you were saying?
The one you were talking about?
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
All right, any other questions on personnel? Great, great. Okay, any liaison reports? Jeff?
Last Wednesday, I had the CHIPS meeting. And they've scheduled the virtual open house for November 12th, 6:30 to 7:15. And Russ, I'm sure will be getting all the information out. They're also at that time going to hold their big basket raffle. But they don't have all the details yet. So the details will be forthcoming. And as always, for such a small group, they do such great work. And they do, and you could tell the frustration that the students aren't there so they can do all the extra activities that they normally do with them. And then I went to the alumni association. The alumni scholarships, they gave out in May, $57,650 to this year's graduates and alumni in scholarships. And the Hall of Fame dinner is being put off to March 2021. And at that time, the class of 2020 will be inducted. So there'll be no new class this year. Because we, because of the pandemic, we weren't allowed to, not allowed, but we weren't able to do that class. So that class will be inducted.
Great. Other liaison reports?
I attended the Harrington PTO meeting. Wonderful group. Their board members are Amanda, Amanda Collinson, Tina Williams, Allison Kenny, Jessica George, Larissa Ducharme, Jen Kivvy, and Barbara Micho. They tend to team up on their positions, which is really wonderful. They are doing a lot of collaborations with Biim and CHIPS this year. One of their big events is coming up, which is, I love this, the Battle of the Booze. And the Battle of the Booze will also include pumpkin carving. They've got it all set up so that there are safety precautions in place. 4:30 to 6:00 is the Battle of the Booze. And that is in the CHS parking lot this coming Saturday. If the weather doesn't permit, it's the same time on Sunday. The other one I chucked in with is McCarthy. They have recycle day coming up. It is going to be on November 7th. And it's in the administrative building here at the parking lot from 8:00 to 3:00. That is an extended time because they couldn't hold their last one. So they've put in for extra hours and they're going to be able to have that extra time. So think about it. If you've got some stuff that you want to recycle, otherwise known as junk, bring it on over. And they will take questions from anybody. They're, they're trying to set up their first meeting in order to elect a board, which they have not done yet. But they will be doing it. And so further to come on that.
Anybody else?
I had a meeting with the ACA, the acapella group, last week. And as I've mentioned in the past, you know, these are groups who have relied on fundraisers such as Apocalypse and, Apocalypse.
Apocalypto.
Yeah. To be able to raise funds. And unfortunately, they cannot do these events. They will be holding other fundraisers. So, you know, I think it's, I'm hoping that they'll get the word out and the committee will be able to support them in their efforts.
All right, anybody else?
So I attended the Parker PTO meeting. And they actually have, and I forgot to bring the date. So shame on me because it's on my notes at home. But they do have a pizza and pumpkins coming up. It was my first time meeting with the Parker. Really good group of parents, you know, and Dr. Parks and everybody was there. So I look forward to working with them more in the future. And I'll get some dates next time and not leave my notebook at home.
All right, and in terms of Santa School, they're having their trunk or treat basket raffle on 31st at noon. And they work alongside with McCarthy on the recycle day on the 7th. And then tomorrow night is the school council of schools meeting. So I'll be attending that and look forward to that one.
Oh, and the pumpkin and pizzas on the 25th. For some reason, Linda knew that.
All right, any new items people have? Donna?
I was going to talk to Dr. Lang about including in his parent newsletter. I made a chance to talk with Phil Stanway from the Open Space Stewards. But just as a reminder, if people access the Chelmsford Land Conservation Trust website, there's all kinds of beautiful open spaces that are available for people to get away from the computer, get outside and enjoy for free. And they have all of these sites and maps listed on that site. I know that they've seen a large uptick in the amount of people visiting these sites. But I think it's, it's always a good reminder that, you know, we have these great places. I also spoke with him, as people know, we do the Christmas tree scavenger hunt. And they're looking at increasing the amount of trees that they have in their scavenger hunt. And we talked about maybe the possibility of having one on each school site as part of that, that whole adventure. So I'll run that by Dr. Lang. But I think that there's, that would be a really nice addition. Another way to get kids outside and away, off the computer and, you know, just enjoy some family time.
All right, anybody else, new items? Okay, I did not receive any emails. I don't know of anybody else for public comment?
I did not, I didn't know.
All right, if not, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I love that we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.